Close meeting in order, please stand for the badge of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a moment of silent reflection for everyone who's at high risk of suicide. Thank you, please have a seat. Roko?
Karlovic.
Here.
Kramer?
Here.
Rechner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Easter.
An executive session was held February 20, 2019 to review and discuss business which could lead to the disclosure of confidential information protected by law. Now for the JROTC, if you can all come up.
Ladies and gentlemen, as the cadets come up here, I'll introduce myself. I'm Colonel Walsh, I'm the senior army instructor, the junior ROTC at the high school. One of the things we do within the JROTC is called service learning. And service learning is an opportunity for the cadets to learn about themselves and the community and to serve them. One of the objectives is when we do a service learning project, you might have seen us in the streets last year, previous years, our number one service learning project was Earth Week, and that's when we go out into the community of Northumberland and Sunbury, fix up places, we work with the elementary schools, we work with businesses, we kind of like to help clean up around Sunbury. This is our town, this is our community, and it's a way for the kids to get back, they are the future, and that's what this is about as well. This year, you'll see some of the shirts here, is a project that they decided to go on to. The service learning project is picked by the students, they research it, you're going to hear a little bit about how they went about that process. But the Books of Hope actually started last year with Jose Lopez, and he's a gentleman right here in the middle. Great project, he brought it to me, and I just want to share this part of the service learning project, and I'll introduce the cadets, and I'll come through and give you a short briefing. But he came to me with the initiative of wanting to start a program on his own, he wanted to self-start, he didn't know how to do it, and it was a, what kind of program was it again? A nonprofit organization. I said, "Why would you want to do that now? I mean, you're so young." But he's got a vision for his life and where he wants to see himself going down the line, and it's called Books of Hope, and the whole focus is to collect books for kids that are in hospitals, wherever they might be, that are in dire straits from either a car accident or even some severe issues like cancer, and they're in extended stay. So just to provide a book, and I was like, you know, kind of get teary-eyed, but it's a pretty good project. And he fed that to the battalion, and they all jumped on board. So with no further ado, you're going to learn a little bit about the history of Books of Hope through Jose and the other students here, and then what we'd like to do in the future with the program. But this is a great service learning project that is not just with the high school and the Shiklemy JROTC, but extends to the other schools within inside the district and also the community at large. So I'm proud to be able to bring the cadets here so that they can talk to you about something that turns them positive in the community, and it's with your help that we're able to do this. So no further ado, I'll turn it over to the battalion executive officer.
Okay, so we have our agenda, this is just basically what we're going to be talking about. All right, and then here, like Colonel said, we have Jose Lopez, he was overall in charge. And then those red bubbles there, he went ahead and we broke down into three different teams based off of the needs that we thought. Communications team, we have represented Alyssa Griffin up here, she'll be talking later on. We have the PR team, that's public relations, what they do is they write articles and they got information out to everybody. We have Eve Probst here to represent that team, and then the shipping and receiving team, they dealt with sorting books, counting books, you know, receiving everything, and then they're also the team that puts everything into boxes and gets that all shipped out. And we have Michael Waskowski here to represent that team, and then underneath all of that we just have the battalion. So the service learning project, the whole point is to get the whole battalion involved, so that was really important. And then I'll pass that on to Jose Lopez.
Hello, everybody. So just a little bit of background on the project as a whole. Like Colonel said, I wanted to start it last year, and it was just a little bit of an idea I had that kept fuming on, and it kept sticking in my mind, and overall, I really wanted to do something to not only help my community, but help many sick children across our nation. So I got a couple cadets together and some other students in our high school, and we started up a little bit of an organization last year. We called it Books of Hope, and we collected, later on we're going to go more into detail about how many we collected, but from last year to this year, our overall collection of books has expanded immensely. And as you can see at the bottom there, that is how we had a competition between all the schools in the district. Each classroom from each school that collected those books would receive a free pizza party. So the kids, they had fun, it was a great competition, we got thousands of books, and we're going to be shipping those out in the spring, so it's going to be awesome, and let's see what the next slide says. All right. So we determined our project based on brainstorming ideas with our senior leadership and the command group, the staff, the people who make the decisions overall for the battalion. Then we polled each class on the best course of action on how to go about doing it. So we came up with separating the three teams, the communications, the public relations, and the shipping receiving. Then we ultimately made a decision based on the consensus of the Corps of Cadets and overall the resources that were available. So we're partnering with BB&amp;T in Sunbury, and they're going to help us with some monetary funds to cover the shipping cost, which is the large piece of our project. But overall, it's a great, great way for the community to come together, to not only help people in our community and local communities, but all across our country. So we shipped hospitals out to Seattle, Washington, which we're going to later talk about, a little boy. He's a great kid, and there was a story that was going around, and he was requesting cards, so I heard about it, and I was like, "Oh, that's awesome." So I got in contact with his parents, and we got a box shipped out. So I'm going to turn it over to our shipping receiving team officer, Michael Waskowski.
I'm Michael Waskowski, I'm part of the shipping and receiving team, and when we started this project last year, we only started with collecting a little over 1,500 books, and most of it was from the battalion and the high school. Coming into this year, we opened it up to the battalion and all the high schools, and our goal was 12,000 books. After collecting all the books, we had over 13,500, and we had from the schools and the battalion along with the community. Each school's goal was to reach 2,000, most of the schools collected way over 2,000. And our goal for next year and going forward is to get new books for the patients who need cleaner books, so there's no germs going into the hospitals. And the goal for that is 6,000, it'll cost more money to get the books instead of just donating more books than what we have, and to involve more students. That's all I have. Alyssa Griffin.
Hi, my name's Alyssa Griffin, I'm the officer in charge of the communications team, so basically, my job with the help of the battalion is to call all the hospitals to see how many they would want or if they would want any. And as you can see here, it's a list of 10 hospitals that we will actually be shipping to, and myself and the battalion have actually called over 60 hospitals so far. And the one, the hospital highlighted in red, was the one Jose talked about earlier, and that's the hospital that we donated to in Seattle, Washington, to Tavish McCawsh. He was sick in the hospital, and as Jose said, we received books to him. And in late March, early April, we will be shipping out to all the other hospitals. So I'd like to direct it to Eve Probst now.
So as you can see in the lower left is Tavish, he has neuroplastoma, which is a brain cancer. What we benefit from this as cadets is we learn the skills of talking on the phone and getting to know these other people to take on later light. We actually learn a lot from our service learning projects, and it actually helps increase community, like getting with the community to help us. And what they benefit from it is we get to give them materials to read in the hospital, so they don't just have to sit there and like be sad all the time, they can read books and color and be happy. And we actually are getting our name out, we're trying like nationwide, worldwide, and we're just trying to raise awareness for all the sick children. And without further ado, Hyen Fritz.
Hi, I'm Hyen Fritz, I worked under Alyssa Griffin in the communications team. This is our future planning, we're planning on expanding our outreach to hospitals and centers in need, and focusing on more new books versus used books. We're trying to purchase boxes ahead of time, so we're more prepared for when we go to the shipping team. We're better in advertisement and community involvement, getting more sponsors and making the organization more aware. We're going to try to get more cadets and student involvement, so we have more people to help count, sort, and ship the books.
Time for a second.
And without further ado, I'd like to give back to Jose Lopez.
Okay, we have a very pretty short video that was posted in the Daily Item not too long ago about our overall collection for this year, there's some cadets who can hear that guy speak. We have on the left is Alyssa Griffin, the communications officer, myself in the middle, and then on the right, that's our shipping receiving team officer, who is overall in
A couple of students involved in the Shiklemy School District JROTC program collected more than 13,000 books for six children. The charity, called Books of Hope, just finished its second campaign since its inception.
It was pretty surprising, actually, we didn't think we'd get to it, but with the help of our district and community and the physical schools.
Well, across Pennsylvania, we've been calling hospitals and organizations like the Royal House around Pennsylvania, calling to try to see if they wanted donations of books, and like we've even gone outside of Pennsylvania, like Seattle, Washington, and I personally have called people from West Virginia and Pennsylvania, so we're trying to do it nationwide.
Well, I mean, I really couldn't be any more proud, you know, not only for our district, but with teachers and students and all the outside donations as a community. It's really a great thing for so many people to come together and help so many children, like she said, nationwide. But all these books are going to go to a great, great cause, and it's amazing.
Glad that's over. And then if there's any, okay, if there's any questions that anybody has, we'd be able to answer those right now. We'll start with you, because you had your hand raised first.
Isn't it, where could we donate books, where would we drop them off, and who do we contact?
As for right now...
For monetary donation as well.
Monetary, we will be able to accept monetary donations, and if you are interested in that, you can just go ahead and contact Colonel Walsh at the high school, they'll be able to give you his phone number, and we can later go ahead and do that. As for book donations, we're pretty maxed out right now, we want to get rid of the ones we have, and then later on, when we start again next year, and if anybody wants to donate, give us a call, we'll gladly accept them, so.
And for the monetary donations, the biggest thing about service learning is little or no cost to the students. So that's why, you know, BB&amp;T's awesome, I mean, there's other, Sunbury Motors and that, but BB&amp;T, the big thing is they can't give us money, but they can give us, they can pay for the shipment. In other words, the boxes get loaded up, take them down there, and they'll pay for that cost through funny money that they have. If it is a monetary donation you want to do, make a checkout to Shiklemy JROTC, and in the memo line put Books of Hope. That way, we can track it and you can track it, and that money will be earmarked for the shipping costs. Now that's the best way to do it.
We mentor youth around Northumberland County, and they often like to, like they collect a luggage one time for children, so this might be something, so would you be willing to team up with another group of youth that would try to help get new books for you, or even help you unpack, whatever?
Absolutely, and the thing about JROTC, it's a citizenship course, so it isn't focused like, it's not putting you know, an organization that's in a high school out there by themselves, but the neat thing about JROTC, it's about working with others. So when we say involve more student involvement, it's not the JROTC. We had actually students from inside the school that wanted to help out as well, whether it be to collect the books, because the more hands we have who go out there, the more voices, why not? And it's all for the common good. Why would I stop, or why would we stop anybody from helping a child? So the more help we have, we just had to cut off the hose. I was waiting for the ceiling to go through where you have all the books.
That still happened with the luggage, we were like, "Okay, we're done, you can't..."
But this is...
So I am getting contacted.
And what's neat about this is growing, is we want to do early advertisement, early touch with sponsors, and then, you know, starting now, like you already know, new books next year, so you guys can spread the word, and then that can come in. Books can always be dropped off at the high school starting next year, and then, or any of the elementary schools or, you know, anywhere around town, sort of like when we do Toys for Tots, JROTC does the Toys for Tots as well, you can always drop those off, any extra ones, we hold for the following year.
I'll be in touch.
Awesome.
We can do it.
Any other questions or comments?
What's the time period throughout the year that you're actually shipping these books out, or are you doing all year?
No, well, we have, I mean, in reference to the hospitals, one hospital said it would take all 13,000, and I was like, "That's awesome." Because we want to get rid of them, I said, "However, we need to share the wealth." But because they have feeder hospitals that are out there in front of us, like Geisinger, and then they have all these feeder hospitals that they would love to feed out to. What we're doing is we have all the books now, and the intent is annually in the springtime to box them up and then ship them out. So we're going to, we have all the books now that we're getting ready to ship out, we're getting the final boxes, and then we're going to ship out in the first week of April. And that's really tied to BB&amp;T's service learning. So in order to provide the funds, they have to be there and do the authorized and legal slave labor for us, so we'll take that.
Are all those hospitals, we're going to be sending books to all those hospitals?
The ones that were listed in white, those are, we've already earmarked all of our books, but like the young lady mentioned, we had 60-plus hospitals that we contacted. And what's neat is, we have them, so it's another hospital we can always contact, and if they're, if they want more, we contact them, and we continue to feed them the new books that they probably want to have. And again, the intent would be, you get the book, if they want to give them out, they can take it home with them, and take them home with them. We just want to make sure we're trying to reach as many kids as possible.
Any age specific, and any...
We have from newborn all the way up through, I mean, you know, if a parent wants to read to their sick child, it doesn't matter the age, up to probably teenager level, 14 years old, 13, 14. That's the area.
Hi, Jose, I think we met one time before, I'm not sure.
Probably did, I meet a lot of people.
With the ROTC, I'm sorry, my name is Regina Russell, and I would like to know, would the ROTC program permit them to do a fund, what is that page they do on Facebook?
Oh, Facebook.
Would they permit them to do a GoFundMe page?
I'd have to go through the district, that would be, that would probably be a fundraiser for the JROTC, but I'm assuming if it went through and it was a GoFundMe...
And approved.
I'd have to get that approved through the board, I have no idea. If that's...
One more thing, thank you for that answer. Target has a community fund, and this would be something that they would definitely help sponsor.
I've heard about that.
Yes, you may want to write them a letter explaining what your program is, and they will definitely get on board. They do something with books.
Yeah. It's awesome.
We're just going by Target.
Yeah.
And we're on the way to get food. Any other questions or comments?
Did you design your own?
Yes, we designed this, and then we gave it back to, we have all of our, we have a Facebook page, Instagram, so.
That's awesome.
Go ahead. Oh, like our Facebook page, too.
I think it's fantastic.
Thank you, yeah, so, but, definitely, social media is a great thing to get poured out, because everybody likes to share stuff, and you had a question?
Yeah, Jake, if I have a ton of boxes of gifts up by the house, pick up the sizes you need. I hate to send them in because I don't know, big or small, so come pick an out, take whatever you want.
Yeah, and the one box that went to Tavish, I think was roughly 250 bucks, I think was $90.
$90 to ship.
$90 to ship. But that was going all the way across Seattle, but we have a plan, we're, you know, to cut the cost too for Philly, and the closer in places is to actually, I have the authorization, I can go ahead and get one of the vans we have, load it up with books, make the delivery ourselves.
That's right.
So.
Absolutely.
And again, Shiklemy JROTC, you can go onto the website, and if you have any questions or comments, please get ahold of us, and we'd love to partner with you guys in the community for this in the coming years.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, JROTC, they're a wonderful group to work with, I've met with them a few times in the past year. All right, so for the month of March, I have a Women's History Month proclamation. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have been in our leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment, abolishment movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas women are able to pursue a formal education, start a business, serve in the military, raise a family, or run for elected offices, and whereas this month, we celebrate campus pioneering women and the victories they've won, and continue our work to build a society where our daughters have the same possibilities as our sons, and now therefore be resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, being mayor of the city of Sunbury, county of North umberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the city of Sunbury council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of March 2019 as Women's History Month. Make this into a motion to accept the proclamation, do I have a second?
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
For the month of April, I have a Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month proclamation. Whereas the unique services of Pennsylvania 811 provides an easy-to-use, one-call notification about excavation projects to know what's below the surface. And whereas Pennsylvania 811 is an important system to use in order to minimize damage to underground utility lines, danger to construction workers, environmental pollution, and loss of utility service to Pennsylvania citizens, and whereas Pennsylvania 811 annually receives more than 800,000 notification requests and transmit more than 6 million notifications, providing protection to utility companies, their employees, customers, and the general public, and whereas we are thankful for the service provided by Pennsylvania 811, and encourage all residents, engineers, designers, excavators, and homeowners to dial 811 in advance before an excavation project such as planting a tree, installing a mailbox post, building a deck or fence, in order to know what's below, to avoid injury or damage. And more information regarding 811 may be obtained by visiting PA811.org. And now therefore be resolved that I, Kurt Karlovic, being mayor of the city of Sunbury, county of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the city of Sunbury council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of April 2019 as Pennsylvania 811 Safe Digging Month. Make this into a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 2018, 2019, February 11, 2019, February 25, 2019, and the reports of the fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, engineer, code office, and the planning commission.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Now, I'd like just to take a moment to commend our police officers for today's drug bust in our city, and have Officer Brad here in charge to make a few comments.
The mayor asked me to make just make a few comments, because we've had a lot of people that have been calling in lately about a lot of the drug issues in the city. We might be a small number, but we are mighty, and we try to do our best with what we have. The guys are working very, very hard, and we do, it's not like it is when you watch TV and they start a case and it's over in 47 minutes in between all the commercials, it's not like that. But it does take a long time, and sometimes it's shorter than others, but we, even though the information that people call in, we do take it, and we do compile things, we have a lot of agencies that are helping us, you know, like today, all the agencies that were involved, just today alone, it was our department, it was the probation department, the sheriff's office, and the code office, just the few that helped today. So we are working hard, we do appreciate everybody's patience towards, but if you, basically if you see something, you know, it doesn't hurt to stop, enter, call, and just pass on the information to the officer that's working at the time, so. But like I said, we are small numbers, but we are mighty, so thank you.
All right, thank you all for what you're doing. Now, Councilwoman Kramer for Texas Honoration.
We have five people on the list, they date back to 2013, they're either almost, they're deceased or have a duplicate bill, or they're on SSI, so I'd like to make a motion that we exonerate these people for a total of $656.18.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
And approve of pay invoices?
Yes, we have invoices from the general fund of $110,544.11, and from liquid bills, $12,162.81, and I'd like to make a motion that we pay these bills.
Second.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
For our New Year's Eve celebration that we're planning, I'd like, all right, SRI has a New Year's Eve expense report averaging around $14,000 for each year when they hosted the event. Since the event was given to the city to oversee after our 2019 budget was approved, I'm requesting that the city contribute $1,500 for the New Year's Eve event. Our contribution will show the city and our future sponsors that we are serious about this event for our city. I'll make this into a motion that the city contribute $1,500 for the New Year's Eve event. I'll second.
I have a discussion on that. So SRI did this as a fundraising event every year, and was able to raise the funds. The way I see it, there's a lot of events in town, there's a lot of people that are planning events that don't have that money that go into it. So why would we want to put taxpayer money now into this event when it's never had that before, when there was always the funds available? The funds were never an issue, there was always the funds available that we were able to raise to be able to do that event. That's just a question I have, when there's other things that could go towards. Have we looked at sponsorships, or looked at contacting people to see if those funds are raised before we allocate that city money?
We are in the process of speaking with Daily Item, the WPOK, about the cost of advertising for this event, in order so that we can have different stages for the sponsorships and different amounts that they can give.
So before we allocate the money for the city, shouldn't we see if there's anything that we can raise before that, and then if there's excess that we need to cover to be able to hold the event, and then come back to look at that?
And I'm saying, since it was given to us by SRI, since they no longer want this event, we're doing this to, as a PR benefit for the city, to pull more people in, see what we actually have, because we are changing locations, it's going to benefit different venues of the city more, more, I guess it's going to be located at Cameron Park instead of Fort the Market Street. And Cameron Park, that's where the majority of the nightlife is located.
And Cameron Park, that's where the majority of the nightlife is located in the city.
Okay, so who's it gonna benefit that it didn't benefit before?
The businesses located along Third Street and Cameron Park.
I'm not saying anything bad about the event, I think it's a good event, I think we should do the event. I just find it inter- I, it means the one event that was given to us, that you were put as the chair, and now, out of all the other events that are in the city, there's a lot of good events that the city does, I just am finding it, why are we putting taxpayer money to this event when taxpayer money doesn't go to all those other events within the city?
Is SRI gonna give us money?
No. SRI usually, it was a fundraiser, it wasn't a, it wasn't an expense. So the money was raised to gain money for SRI, not put more out. So that's why I'm wondering from a city standpoint, why are we putting more out towards it when it was always a fundraising event to begin with? That's my only thought on it.
Yeah, I understand that, but at some point, we have to start showing good faith into our city in order to get more contributions on the outside. This was an SRI event, uh, they no longer wanted it, financial or lack of volunteers, whatever they want. Uh, now that it's on our side, we also have lack of volunteers, we're trying to get the communities effort to help, but, uh, show of good faith on our behalf, this has been given to us, it is now a city event, so why don't we make, make this one of our namesakes, our, our main events for the year, every year, an annual event for the city?
I agree, I mean, I, again, I don't...
Do you have a line? I didn't mind the people.
Yes, even though if the, if the motion doesn't pass, I do have a mayor's line item for PR marketing for the city, so, but I'm asking the city to back me on this event for our...
I'm a hundred percent backing on the event, I don't want it to, I think the event's great, I think what we can do with the event, I don't know, if you, you've been a part of the event for a long time?
It has, I only have a brief comment, and that is that it, it wasn't really a fundraiser for SRI, it broke even, which I think is part of the reason why they kind of stopped.
Well, the most was a thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, it, it was primarily just, it supported itself, but it was, we saw primarily as sort of like a fundraiser rather than a fundraiser, because it was more about building community and celebrating our community and bringing people to the community. So, I just want to clarify that, not to say anything else, but anything else, any of your other comments, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can we continue with the move?
I have another question. I didn't know if you'd want to wait another month and make some phone calls to hear if...
Yeah, it's all I'm saying.
They, they have a list, Chris, I'm sure they have a list from last year.
Sponsorships.
Sponsorship, to see where the money came from, number one. Only thing I'm worried about, we'll start designing city money because there's gonna be alcohol in it, correct?
Yes.
It's obvious there'll be alcohol, just want to make sure city money doesn't cross over and get mixed into with the alcohol stuff.
Now that's for the entertainment, it'll be for the entertainment setting things up.
But there is a list out there, you know, I briefly talked about before, I know where some of the money came from, I don't know.
Yeah, and I've spoken with SRI, and they won't give me a list of their sponsors because of confidentiality reasons, but they have sent out a letter to them requesting if they wanted to continue sponsoring to contact the city, so we cannot get a list of their actual sponsors.
My suggestion is hold off, I miss, I mean, we've got a first and a second. Hold off, see what money comes in as far as sponsorship money. If we don't have enough, gladly come back and we can go through.
Hold off, I've got some ideas.
Well, I would like to continue with this, because I would like to see you contribute every year, so since we already have a second, may as well just let it go through a vote.
Karlovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Easter?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, so, and that puts us on to the New Year's Eve road closure for the event. I make a motion to close Market Street from Fourth Street to Second Street on December, December 31st, from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM on January 1st, 2020, for the New Year's Eve event. That would give us enough time to set up and tear down. I'll make that into a motion. Do I have a second?
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovich?
Yes. The New Year's Eve Noise Ordinance Waiver. Our local noise ordinance is 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and I make a motion to waive our noise ordinance on December 31st, 2019, from 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM on January 1st, for New Year's Eve celebration. Do I have a second? Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter? Karlovich?
Yes. Our New Year's Eve Open Container Waiver. With our adult-oriented New Year's Eve celebration taking place this year in Cameron Park on Market Street, near our local drinking establishments, I make a motion to waive our open container ordinance, as the city's done in the past, on December 31st, 2019, from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM on January 1st, 2020, for the entire Cameron Park location and Market Street from Second to Third Street, and Third Street from Woodlawn Ave. to Chestnut Street. Glass containers are prohibited, only plastic containers will be allowed. And if you're looking at the map that's in your, your, each of your folders, you'll see the highlighted portions of the street that I'm asking. And we, we have, I did leave our officer in charge directly before the council meeting began, and we wouldn't have no issues with our police department with this, as long as we clearly mark the boundaries of it for that matter.
The only other thing I would say, Mayor, is to, this, this is just for the city ordinance, open container, um, the, the establishments are still gonna have to follow their L C E regulations on alcohol leaving their establishment, so that's what they, they need to make sure they understand.
Okay, check with our insurance.
So I make this into a motion. Do I have a second?
A second. That's the only question, did we check with insurance, are they good on this, as far as having that? Have we done that in the past?
Yeah.
We're good? So we're all good on that?
Yeah, we, we, I know, they've done this before in fact, they're just, they're waiting the, the ordinance that we don't decide.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Karlovich?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Alright, and for the discussion, uh, for the New Year's Eve city employee usage, I would like us just to start thinking about the New Year's Eve coming up. I'd like to try to figure out how the event, um, was conducted in the prior years at the Sundbury Ice Ring, because I've tried requesting documents, we don't really have documentation regarding, how many, um, members of the public participated, were there, how many volunteers were actually at the ice ring, how many employees were there?
About children, children that night.
Yes, so the ice rink I'm planning on, for the children slash family oriented, the ones that want to stay away from the adult-oriented loud noises. But I'd like, I'm just bringing this up now, so we can start discussing regarding, uh, past, how we conducted in the past, and that we can kind of...
I've been planning it since midnight, before 11:00, I'll check, tell me as the, the figures of that. Time shift.
Okay. And then, um, City Administrator Ockert for, um, discussions.
Yes. I have to stand up when I talk. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, take a moment this evening to, uh, recognize, uh, the Department of Public Works. Hi, D P W, back there in the corner. Um, it was clear from the very first that I, uh, started working here, I got to know a lot of the employees, all the employees, employees throughout the city I can't say enough of good things about. They're hardworking people, they're good people, really doing the best they can with the resources that we provide them, and so I'm proud of all of them. I'm also, but right now, I just wanted to recognize D P W, um, their, uh, their hard work often is unrecognized, sometimes they, they hear only about complaints about the snow or about the brush, or this or that or the other, and, uh, but what they don't get to hear often enough is the compliments about the work that they do. Especially in the last month, there have been a lot of changes in the department, we've got a new supervisor, I feel like the department, everyone's very much more motivated, looking at processes, looking how you do things so that we can be a bit more efficient and serve the residents of this city even better than we already have. So, a case in point was the snow removal over this season, we kind of took a look at it each time it snowed, what could we do better, how can we better organize to both, you know, serve our residents and also serve the customers that are needing to park downtown on Market Street. So it's not set in stone yet, but we are developing kind of better practices that we can set in stone a little bit more firmly later on, as we learn. So I just wanted to say thank you to them and recognize the good work that you're doing, and so, how about a round of applause for D P W?
Good job, guys.
I answer my question. Uh, this is a little update from the meeting I had with downtown business owners. Uh, I think it was a council meeting, two council meetings ago, that, uh, a few issues had been brought up, plus there had been a letter concerning a complaint about the parking downtown, uh, with especially the larger vehicles. And so I thought, well, it would be better for me, instead of thinking of a solution on, on my own in a vacuum, to invite the business owners, to talk about these issues, and see what their perspective was on it, and what they thought were good potential solutions. So there would be, talked about three topics, uh, cigarette litter, um, we did agree that it's a problem, and that we want to do better with, uh, cleaning up our streets and preventing cigarette litter. So there is a Keep America Beautiful program called Cigarette Litter Prevention Program, and, uh, we're gonna pursue getting some butt containers and have them strategically placed throughout the downtown, and SRI is going to, uh, I talked to Sierra at SRI, and, uh, they're gonna take a look at that and maybe take that on as, as a project for them. The second thing we talked about was the large vehicle parking on Market Street. Uh, I'm sure you've noticed with the, sometimes the larger, longer vehicles, parking with one tire up on the curb and sidewalk, um, it is damaging to curbs and sidewalks, they're not meant for that kind of abuse. It also doesn't look very nice, you know, you want a city that looks orderly, uh, as you come downtown, plus drivers experience difficulties getting through the narrow, uh, lanes of travel. So although, uh, we discussed a couple of things with the meeting with the business owners, uh, thought about a way forward with maybe modifying ordinance, however, uh, after speaking with Chris and Department D P W Supervisor Steve Welker there in the back, we've come up with a potential solution that will satisfy both customers who, who really want to get door-to-door, uh, park at the front door of the business they're going to, and also accommodate drivers who, who want to be able to drive through those travel lanes safely, and also, um, improve the city image. So I don't want to talk too much about it until I can actually, uh, get some plans and see what's, you know, all the cost involved in that before I announce it. But I just want to let you know that I take very seriously all the input I get, so it's not just about the business owners, it's not just about the residents, it's not just about what we want to see as a council for the city image. You have to take all of that into consideration and try to come up with the best solution for all involved. So I just want to let you know that that's what we're working on. And then the, one of the other things we talked about was the snow removal on Market Street. Tried something a little different this last time, in which we tried to request residents that are on Market Street to not park their vehicles during the night, so that our, our D P W workers could go ahead and keep those parking spaces clear all through the night, and so we ended up with, um, better, uh, situation than Monday morning, because the snow occurred Sunday, Monday morning where businesses were open for business and their customers had, had a place to park, they didn't have to step out and slush in snow. Um, we are gonna tweak that a little bit, and then once we get a firm, more firm kind of process, we'll be able to publish what that process is, so it won't be a surprise to residents that all of a sudden we're asking them not to park on, on Market Street, and that people will kind of get into the routine of how we do this. So hopefully that will happen, probably not by the end of this year, but during the next year, we're gonna keep working on this process. I'm still up for the next topic. Police Department, uh, Building Committee, we have regrouped, our first meeting was held on March 5th. Um, we're gonna meet again on March 19th, and, uh, right now, we're gonna validate our requirements and make sure that they are, uh, what we actually need as far as space requirements, different types of, um, arrangement and flow within the building, um, space requirements. And then, we're going to, uh, also start gathering a, a list of properties for consideration, and then what we're, what we're gonna do is do a, a method where you match up the requirements list with what those properties can offer and, and which is the best fit. So there will be a lot of considerations for what's the best fit. One of them is the space requirements, do they match up? Another is, can we afford it? Another is, uh, how long will it take? All those things will have to be considered. And then the other thing that I didn't, uh, write actually on the agenda was, I'll be researching funding strategies, so it's gonna be some combination of city money, perhaps loans, grants, um, and then it's gonna have to be something kind of cobbled together to meet the entire, uh, expense. But hopefully, we'll keep moving forward and, and make progress on that, uh, in a timely manner. Uh, still at the goal of six months having a decision. The establishment of a safety committee. Uh, Jalen and I sat with, uh, Mr. Adam Purdy reviewing all of our insurance, uh, plans and programs, uh, the costs of insurance, and of course, uh, one of my main things is to try to control costs for the city, find ways to save money, and here's one where I kind of had already recognized that we need to strengthen our safety culture within this whole organization of your, of your departments and your services, that the city officer, we want to make sure that we're focused on safety, not only to prevent injury to our own workers, but also to any, uh, residents or people, uh, visiting our facility. So, one way we can do that is to establish a safety committee. It'll consist of about six to eight members of, uh, of department workers, both employe- employees and management, we want to make sure there's at least a fifty-fifty match mix of, of managers and employees, uh, and then what we'll do is start meeting monthly and, uh, look at what have we paid out losses for in the past. Usually, I've looked through some of them, a lot slipped, some trips and falls, which is common, um, and then how do we mitigate those risks and hopefully have fewer, uh, compensable events? The, the bonus on that is that we, uh, can get a five percent discount on our workman's compensation insurance, which would result in five to six thousand dollars saving per year. So that's all I have for my, what were those points of discussion? And then I have one more thing under announcements. Street sweeping season, it's coming! So, it will be in effect from the first of April till November 30th. We want to make sure that the word gets out there, the parking ordinances will be strictly enforced. Uh, there will be an announcement in the Daily Item, we'll put it on Facebook, as soon as I have our Facebook page up and running, which is very close to being so, and, but we will not be doing door-to-door flyers, um, this year. Uh, we feel that if now we're in a rhythm of, it's going to be a standard first of April to the 30th of November, that, you know, again, once everyone knows that that's what the standard process is, then we expect that if people go, oh yeah, it's April, street sweeping's starting. There will be warnings for parking violations the first week that street sweeping starts, but then after that, uh, violators will be ticketed. I think that's it, on that one.
So, the next Heart and Earth's 250th Anniversary Committee meeting will be April 24th at 6:00 PM in these council chambers. Donations and sponsorships are being accepted at the mayor's office. The New Year's Eve, the next New Year's Eve committee meeting is May 22 at 6:00 PM in these council chambers. Donations and sponsorships are also being accepted at the mayor's office. Our upcoming city council meetings, our next one, March 25th at 6:15 PM, will be at the Shikleme High School Auditorium for a special Shikleme Theater performance. April 8, 2019 at 6:15 PM will be held in the Dagenstein Community Library in the First Floor Community Room. And April 22, 2019 at 6:15 PM in the Sundbury YMCA in our First Floor Youth Center. That's the room that's in the rear of the facility on the first floor. The Free City Cleanup Days at the Sundbury Municipal Authority is 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, April 23, 25, 30, and May 2nd. National Suicide Prevention Lifeline is 1-800-273-8255. The Lifeline provides 24/7 free and confidential support for people in distress, prevention and crisis resources for you or your loved ones, and best practices for the professionals, and then the city administrator office hours. Is there any audience comment at this time? Please stand up first and talk.
Um, I had, uh, I wasn't able to make it to the meetings for the businesses in the 28th because it was, uh, uh, pretty short notice, um, so, unfortunately, I had another comment.
I apologize, that's my fault, it was really a spontaneous thing to, to think about, okay, let's get the business owners to get owners together, and next time that I want to do that, be much better noticed.
I mean, it's...
Yeah, but I just went like, that's, that's my fault.
But, um, I did have a comment about that, because I, I, it keeps stressing like businesses on Market Street, I'm not exactly on Market Street, um, but I'm right off of Market Street. That doesn't mean my business is any less important than the ones on Market Street. So, um, I'm right there off of Fourth Street, um, uh, Fort the Market, so...
I got you. I'll, I'll, I'll include all, all the businesses in the downtown.
But the, the snow, I did, um, have to cancel one. But the snow, I did have to cancel one of my classes this winter when it snowed. You know, I have an unusual business, because we're only open like Sundays and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings, you know what I mean? So at nighttime it gets colder, it freezes a little more. But I did have to cancel one of my classes due to snow removal, like, on the streets. So absolutely no parking for any of my customers, like, it was pretty bad.
Which date was that?
That was the first big snowfall that, like, it was just a mess everywhere, which is understandable. But just a little attention to like those parking spots too, since I do utilize a lot of, you know, those for my customers as well. And I had a comment about street lighting. Why is it that there's a section on Market Street that's like really dim all the time? Is there a reason for that, that those lights don't work as well, like?
Which section, which block?
Between Fourth and Fifth.
There you go.
Between, on Market Street, between Fourth and Fifth? I don't know, but we'll look into it.
Well, it's been like that for years, but those lights, like, it's bright and then it's really dark, which I think is, I don't think any part of a main street like that should be that dark. And somebody told me once before that it was because that they just were like cutting lighting costs, but I feel like that can't be true, like that, you know what I mean? That just sounds like an unreasonable explanation, especially since they put all those lights down on the street. And then they put a brand-new light bulb outside of my bedroom window that looks like, you know, the light is shining right in my bedroom at all times. Like, we have shutters, but my poor husband works at 4:30 in the morning, so he wears a sleep mask and a bandana on his head. I mean, so I had a lot of complaints from my customers that, you know, it's dark right there. They get nervous, because they're not from Sunbury, and for some reason, people who don't live in Sunbury think that there's like gang wars happening on, you know, so.
Yeah, we want people to feel safe, so we'll look at that.
And it's super dark right there where my business is too. So I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up, because it was something that people felt was annoying or leaving. That is why I get nervous, so, okay, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Any other audience comment? Please, can we be voting?
I'm Becky Anders. I'm on the staff at Elijah's Bowl Soup Kitchen, and I would like to make a comment about the JROTC, first of all. They come and they work hard the first Saturday of every month, from September through June. And they are out there working in the community. If you see them in a parade, don't feel bad for not applauding. I mean, you need to applaud those kids. They work so hard in this community, they really need our praise and admiration. Since I served on Elijah's Bowl staff, I do have a concern. She was speaking about safety. We had, were told that there is a new restaurant opening on Center Street, between Market and Woodlon Avenue. We also heard through the grapevine, they were going to not allow parking in that area, that they were going to paint everything yellow.
To be clear, Mayor, what's the concern with that?
Safety. There is absolutely no lighting in that alley when it's dark. The church put a motion light in for the safety of the people that use the Presbyterian Church. Sunday and Wednesday nights, AA is in there. Tuesday night, they have another organization that's in there. The city band uses the facilities on Monday night. We have a Boy Scout troop that uses the facility on Thursday night. On Thursday and Friday night, there is a group called Ventures, where it's a flag group. They use the facility, they can only use the door onto Center Street. We have our soup kitchen on Saturdays. Thursday morning, we bring things into the soup kitchen. All day Friday, we have deliveries coming. I'm concerned, I am really concerned about the safety issue, because when you open that door, and that is the only door that they may use, you're out on the street immediately. And you see what cars, how the cars drive on Market Street, let alone drive down an alley. We have people now that come down the wrong way constantly. And even on Saturday mornings, they fly up through. Doesn't matter that any of our clients are standing there waiting to come in, somebody's gonna get killed.
So your concern, even if the cars weren't there, is still that it's not lit well?
Well, right, and not only that, but when the cars are there, at least, it's a buffer. There's nothing, I mean.
So is the traffic there? Vehicles being parked in that alley, is there any traffic? Yeah, so we look at that one also, because that's a tough one. The street sweeper can't get down there, obviously, when the cars are down there, and that's not on the street sweeping schedule, and it should be.
Well, most of them do move their cars, because they know Thursday, or Wednesday night, I guess, into Thursday morning they have to move their cars. And they do move their cars, because.
Yeah, when I talk though, they still didn't go down there under the expectation that there's one car that happened to stay, the thing's stuck. So we'll have to consider it, because the business did have a concern too, because they wanna be able to unload and let people get food, because it's a to-go place.
We had a problem on Saturday. They were there with their big trucks, trying to work on the establishment on Saturday. And my people were in and out, and I'm really, some of them have walkers, they have the roll-in walkers, they have the wheelchairs, the scooters.
Yeah, we'll have to, I'd like to meet with you guys to go over that, because in my mind, that's also a location that has kind of just historically been, you can park there if you want to, and it's not, there's no meters, there's no spots marked.
Well, the thing is, subway employees park there, the accounting office parks there, and the church people park there, because Faith United Methodist Church runs to the daily item. And usually, everybody else is parked down at the others. And, you know, when the Sunbury City Band come and they bring their wagon, it takes them a good hour and a half to load their instruments. When they come back from a concert, they store their instruments at the church, that's another hour and a half to lay unload your instruments and chairs.
Wouldn't the cars not being there help that?
I don't know.
Would there be more room?
It just depends what time of the day. And then, you're still going to have people that wanna go to the restaurant, zooming around because they don't wanna wait.
Okay, well, I'd like to sit down, possibly you want to include in that, with the business owners and you guys as well, just to kind of see what we can do. Because in my mind, there's no parking lines, there's no regulation of it.
I just don't understand why they wanted to do something back in there with, I mean, it is really dark.
Is it across from the church?
Yes, yes. And, you know, and from what I understand, they're only going to do takeouts.
Yeah, in the beginning.
And I just, I don't know, it's just a real safety hazard.
We'll have to look at it, because we don't want to deter a business, they have a plan.
Well, if it's dark when we leave here, take and go down the alley and just see how.
Yeah, no, I know it is dark. Yeah, so we'll have to look at it, because that's, I mean, in my mind, it's a dangerous spot for people to be parking at any time.
I don't understand why they wanted to go in there when there's two couple of other empty rooms.
If y'all can quiet down, please?
Yeah, no, and I don't wanna get into that, because we can't tell anyone who, where they can't go, obviously. If they would like to open a business. The goal would just be to try to make it as safe for everyone. And I think we just need to kind of look to see whether it's crossing something in there, bright lights, flashing lights, I don't know what it is. We'll have to sit down and figure it out. Right now, I can't tell anybody off the top of my head, but we'll have to do that.
I'll drive through there tonight when I get home. I just think we're getting it.
It is so.
Any other audience comment? Any other?
It is.
Thank you, Regina Russell, elected Democratic Committee Woman for Ward Two. I would like to also say that the young man, Jose, with the ROTC program, helped me one evening when he saw me having difficulty walking and carrying bags, and I was very impressed with that. He was in his fatigues, and came along and said, do you need help? So I would like to put that out there. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you know the answer to this question. I was under the impression that SRI was formed to do things for Sunbury.
Chris Reese would be better off, because he's on the board member.
Okay, I just wanted to finish.
What do you mean by doing things for Sunbury?
That they were, that it was formed to sort of do things like maybe what Ms. Uppher is doing, like where you're doing the event, sort of taking over some responsibilities for the city so that the city wouldn't have to do it.
I would agree in some cases with that.
Okay, let me finish, so I'm just, I wanna get to a point though. So the mayor said that he's asking for a list of sponsors, and there's a disclosure statement that each of the sponsors sign, saying that you're not gonna disclose any of the information?
No, it was a decision from SRI that we didn't wanna just go out and say to all these, to the city, or from, the board member, excuse me, these sponsors gave money to SRI under the assumption that they were gonna get services for their money. And for us to then just say, well, this is how much they paid, and this is what they got from SRI to the city, we just felt it was better if they contacted the city, if they had an interest in it, versus the city just releasing all that information. Or, excuse me, versus SRI just releasing all that information.
I'm just trying to find out, is it in SRI's bylaws that you cannot disclose this information when the city was to ask for? I'm not saying anybody and everyone, but I would certainly think that it should be available to the city if it's called Sunbury Revitalization Incorporated.
It was just a decision within SRI.
So the board made that decision?
Yes, it was brought to the board. Kirk was there, he brought, he was there at the meeting, he brought it up.
Thank you. And then, I would like Councilwoman Kramer, could you explain to me when you are doing a tax exoneration, you mentioned this evening that some, or maybe one, was given due to SSI?
Yes.
Okay, can you expound on that a little bit?
It's based on their income. All these exonerations are based on their income. And if their income is below a certain level, they can apply for an exemption. But chances are, they'll be back on the list next year, so that we don't just exclude people from paying taxes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find out. So the person can ask to be exonerated one year if they're having some sort of hardship?
Right.
And then they go back on.
Yes, like I said, some of these went back to 2013. See, they were duplicate bills, some of them, and people just, well, I got a duplicate bill, I already paid it, so I'm not worrying about it. And they never tell anybody they got it. So then it comes down to these people, this person has all these duplicate bills, and that means they paid another bill. And so it leaves us to try to straighten it out.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you know, if I was on SRI, how's our federal exonerations?
It depends on how much money you make.
Absolutely.
Thank you for those questions, those answers, thank you.
Any other audience comment tonight?
I just wanna first say that I think it might be a good idea if the SRI isn't willing to give up the names and numbers of the sponsors, that is it possible that we can go to them and say, hey, listen, contact your sponsors and find out if it's okay to get the information?
And just real quick, I don't want what I said to be a negative aspect of SRI, because SRI is working with us, they're allowing us to use their equipment. They're being beneficial for the city for this event. It's just, and they are, they're not releasing to us, like Chris was saying, this is how much they sponsored, this is what they got, but they are sending all their sponsors a letter saying, the city's now in charge of this. If you still wanna contribute, please contact our office. And a few people have started contacting our office.
Yeah, everybody got the 1000 saying exactly what you said, sir.
All right, so the other thing, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, Chris, a couple of weeks ago I called you, and I left a quick message with you, and you had not heard the message when I called you. And what was so nice is that you called me back, whether you knew it was a complaint or a praise. And I actually was praising you and your team for cleaning up the roads. And I said, oh my gosh, the roads are actually dry then, you know what I mean? Which was not the case in some of the other surrounding areas. So I wanna first come out and comment and say thank you for that. Thank you for picking up your phone and calling me back, not knowing whether it was a complaint or, you know, a praise. So I just wanted to, you know, give credit for that.
I'll just call back.
And thank your team for really making the effort and cleaning up the roads. So, you did a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other audience comment tonight? All right, thank you all for coming out tonight, this meeting's now adjourned.